Need a motion to return to open session, please.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Need a motion to certify closed session that only the items discussed in closed session were those items in the enabling motion and those items in accordance with section 2.23711D1 of the Virginia Code.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Albrecht?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Fossett?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ayer?
Yes.
Ms. Woolby?
Yes.
Ms. Cap?
Yes. We have no action out of closed session, so we'll move to the next agenda item, which is public address. And this is where the board sets aside three minutes with the maxim-- I'm sorry, thirty minutes with a maximum of three minutes per citizen to address the board on items of educational interest. At this time, no one has signed up in advance for public address, therefore I will open it up to the audience. And if anybody would like to address this board, please step forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Pleasant, president of the MCEA and resident at 2737 Old Fort Road. I am pretty certain that the board's aware of it, but I just wanted to make sure and have it on the record that next Tuesday night at Pulaski High School at seven o'clock is going to be a public hearing on the standards of quality. The actual, the Board of, um, Virginia Board of Ed is coming to Arburg, or close to Arburg, for a public hearing. We're trying to get folks out. We would love to have people outside the building with signs and inside the building speaking about the complete underfunding of those standards of quality. So they are having some revisions to it, and they have four public hearings planned in the state. And one is next Tuesday night at seven o'clock at Pulaski High School. And I wanted to let you, be sure that you guys knew that, and I want to, and I'll get the information to the board's supervisors as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? At this time, if so, please step forward and state your name. See no one, public address is now closed. The next item on our agenda is consent items. And as board members, okay? Well, we don't need a, we don't need a motion on consent. I just, anybody want to pull any consent items and discuss? You have four items there under field trips. Okay, hearing none, items have been approved on consent. Next item on our agenda is the personnel report. Need a motion to approve the personnel report, please.
Second.
Any discussion on the personnel report? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel report is approved. The next item on our agenda is payment of the bills. Need a motion to pay the bills?
Will we pay the bills?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bills are paid. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcement. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Our first item this evening is the sequestration letter to, to our delegates. I provided you with the draft of the letter in your board packet. I had some input from at least one board member, and I've made some minor revisions, which I'll speak to. Basically, the letter is designed to express this board's concern about the potential that there will be a major reduction in funding for Montgomery County Schools for Title I and also for our special education program. The, um, changes that I made in the letter are that I turned paragraph one into three paragraphs. Ms. Drake, did you upload the new letter? Okay. I don't think it is, is in here as revised, but anyway, I made, I've made the changes. I revised the first paragraph to three paragraphs as suggested by a board member. Thank you, Ms. Albrecht, for that suggestion. I also added eight percent beside the written language, eight percent. And I added a sentence into the letter about the actual deficit that we have between the funds we spend for special ed and the funds we get from federal, state, and local sources. And, um, round figures we get, we spend about twelve million dollars for special education. And of that twelve million dollars, three million dollars comes directly from the operating fund and is not provided through either federal funds, earmarked state funds, or earmarked local funds. And I did add those pieces to the letter. And with the board's approval, I'm happy to sign this letter or submit it on your behalf to the appropriate delegates.
Do we need a motion? Just, I'm very excited that we're doing that. Thank you.
Board members, any additional comments on the letter? Hearing none, the superintendent will proceed with sending the letter on to the delegates or those addressed on the letter. Mark Warner, Jim Webb, and Morgan Griffin will be the ones who receive this. Any questions? Okay, next item.
Uh, our next item is first offense drug and alcohol intervention program. And as you know, we've been working with this area of the student code of conduct since the board's retrieved back in May. And the board expressed a desire to place some more stringent sanctions on first offenders, possibly through a board hearing for all first offenses. A plan has been developed by staff which increases the interventions at the school level for the first offense possession and under the influence of drugs and alcohol. It is modeled after those that are used in some other areas, school divisions. I have recommended that the board consider the intervention plan for implementation in the second semester of the 2012-2013 school year without the necessity of having a hearing with the school board. However, failure of the student to comply with the intervention program would result in a recommendation for expulsion, and the student would then come before this board. The proposed plan has been reviewed by our school principals and is presented this evening as an alternative to holding hearings for first offenders. I've got Jason Garrettson in the room, and I know some of the board members had expressed an interest in a little more information about what the behavior contract would look like. And I'm happy to have Jason come to the podium and address that if that is the desire of the board.
Yes.
I would, I would.
I need a motion to, yeah, to accept it as.
Can I make a motion to accept the, uh, the draft that Montgomery County has in reference to first offense substance abuse?
It's related to policy, which is section seven, article three, and then it's a seven, three.
Seven.
Seven, three, seven, three, two.
Seven, three, two, aye.
A second.
Okay, now we have it open for discussion.
And I would like to hear from Jason a little bit. Thank you.
Yes.
The superintendent Blackburn. I'm available for questions.
You have worked with the principals on this, and they're feeling that this is a good way to go?
Yes, ma'am. I spoke, um, face-to-face, telephone, or via email with every secondary principal in the division. And they all felt like, with, with some differences of opinions on the specifics, but they very much felt like this was a positive direction to go. There was not a single school-level administrator who, who felt like the first step should be to the board. They all expressed an, an interest in having an opportunity to intervene with that student prior to bringing them before the board.
So they didn't mind having, it's an extra responsibility, really, for them and their staffs. And that's why I was curious to be sure that they were on board with it.
Yes, ma'am. There, there are some, absolutely, there will be some new steps involved if you were to move forward with the draft, but, but many of those are kind of administrative, getting the paperwork pieces in place, some monitoring with that student. But the big part, the counseling piece, is actually handled by New River Valley Community Services counselors.
Just as long as our administrators at the high schools are on board with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have two. One, I really would like to hear what the, um, contracts, what that looks like and what, you know.
Yes.
With the penalties, I, I'm just, it's kind of wide open.
Well, the, the penalty would be if, with the contract, if a student did not comply with what was outlined in the contract, then at that point, we would bring them before the board. Basically, at that point, to say, um, this was, this was the direction we, we proceeded with this student, um, but at this time, they're not fulfilling their obligations, their responsibilities. And then we would bring them to the board at that point, ma'am.
But the behavior contract, Jason, it has things like improving attendance. Would you speak to that?
Yes, ma'am.
The one that I saw that you'd put together?
Yes, ma'am. In short, the, the behavior contract basically speaks to the student having regular attendance at school, attending and being there. The student working hard with their academics. You know, we, uh, we certainly would like to see all those grades to be passing grades, but, but at least no failing grades due to lack of effort or missing assignments. And certainly no additional, um, uh, no, no additional behavior referrals, misbehavior, misconduct on the bus or in the school. So basically, the expectation in short is if you're going to come back to the school and be a student here, um, we, we want you to do all those things that we've outlined that we, we really expect all of our students to be doing.
Okay, so you have a student who's already making good grades. And, you know, they're doing everything they need to do, but they're still, you know, under this contract because of some kind of illegal substance. I don't understand what the consequence is.
Well, they would still have most likely a suspension. It must be referred to law enforcement under Virginia Code. Many of the things that we're already doing with students who, who are violating first offense, but then we would include the behavior contract that basically stipulates, you know, you really need to come back with the understanding that, um, you know, you've kind of had your first chance. And, and then there's the counseling component that hasn't been in effect before, where they would be involved with a, a counselor to talk about these concerns and hopefully get some help for that student or that family.
Well, I believe there needs to be more consequences to bringing illegal substances. I mean, we have students who have the privilege of driving to school, who are involved in extracurricular activities. You know, this needs, these things need to be impacted. If it means for a semester, they're not involved with them, for a certain period of games or matches or tournaments or how, whatever, or you don't drive. You don't, you can't come bring your car on campus. To me, those, those are the things that we need, I would like to see happen with these students to say, this is serious stuff. They're not going to be coming before us for possible expulsion. They need to understand, you know, we're not playing. And the, as far as the ten-day suspension, um, the block schools do five days.
Yes, ma'am.
So would this ten days still be five days at the block school if we stayed with the ten days?
For, for the principal, um, at a block school, I think five days is, is the greatest extent they can suspend a student.
Right, but I'm just saying.
Yes, ma'am, five and, five and ten. Yes, ma'am.
Along, for me, along with making sure they have some very strict, um, penalties that go with this, loss of privileges, I don't necessarily need to see them out of the building for a length of time, up to ten days, five days in the block school. Because the academics for many of these students is already impacted. Don't want to go further with that. But if we can have the strict behavior contract have more of an impact, I would be willing to see the days come down.
And, and we would intend for those students to, to hopefully serve their suspension at Phoenix so they would still be in an academic program and should not fall behind on their work, should they be willing to attend Phoenix during their suspension. And certainly, some of the other sanctions you've mentioned are listed in our code of conduct already. So certainly, the board could discuss if you wanted to add any of those, obviously. They're already at your disposal in the current code of conduct.
One, one of my concerns has been for a long time is that there's a lack of consistency that I see across the district as to how things are handled. I understand and I appreciate to be able to look at the extenuating circumstances, but there still needs to be some basis there that this is what everybody's going to get for a first offense of substance abuse.
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's the intent with this proposal as well, is that this would be, for lack of a better word, the standard. Certainly, working with Dr. Graham, perhaps if it was a young elementary school student and, and as you get into the, into the situation and the case, that, that maybe this is something they weren't real aware of what they were doing, then perhaps we wouldn't do a lot of the things like the counseling and components like that. But, but for the secondary student, um, this, this would be the standard, um, the standard sanction for those students with first offenses.
I guess I'm just not seeing, I don't have enough detail.
Okay.
I don't have enough detail.
This is the detail, Ms. Franklin. If you, if the board would like for us to add other details to it, certainly we, you know, we can take that direction from the board. But the program, the way it's set up at this point, does not include the additional consequences that you're speaking of, either the loss of driving privileges or the loss of extracurricular participation activities. Certainly, we can take direction from the board to add that, that, if that is your desire.
There were two things I wrote down as I read through this, and the first was, you know, one of the school districts, they require a parent meeting before the student returns to school. And I'm curious why we chose not to put that in our list.
It's a part of our, the counseling component for us. As, as we have it set up with New River Valley Community Services, the first counseling session would be with a parent. Generally, every time a student is suspended for substance abuse, the parent has to come in at the time that the child's getting ready to go home. They have that communication piece with school administration. There's the counseling piece at the beginning and the counseling piece at the end.
Okay, but can we, in my mind, I think that needs to specifically be spelled out here because I think parents need to take a more active role when these students are suspended, and it needs to be spelled out that there has to be a parent meeting before the child is allowed to return to school. Even if it's already happening, if it's spelled out, to me, it makes it a little stronger. And I also had the question of the other school district. They had loss of sports eligibility, but my point is there's a lot more than sports that our students participate in. So we may, need to make that across the board and not just sport-specific. But, I mean, I think if, yeah, any extracurricular activities, if they're being suspended from school, I don't know what I had to drink today, but they're being suspended from school, they need to come up with something. I mean, parents need to be involved, and I don't think they should be participating in anything extracurricular.
For how long?
That I think we need to talk about because I think we're all going to have a different idea of how long that should be. I mean, for me, it's at least a month. And I'll throw that out as a starting point.
Board members?
Well, just a comment. I, I think some of our, you know, when we spoke about it before, my issue is with illegal substance abuse because I think we have an idea, or I might have had an idea in my mind, that the student that doesn't come to class, that misses school, that doesn't listen, that's causing trouble, is the one that's maybe doing drugs, smoking pot, et cetera, et cetera. But I think we're missing it because that's not always the case, as you all know. And I think we've got a much bigger problem than anybody wants to admit with prescription drug usage. And, you know, that's something that if you start, if you ever get a, a high schooler to really be honest with you, how many of his friends are on lor tabs, on oxycodines, or on oxycotins? I think everybody would be amazed because it's a problem. And sad to say, not just with teenagers. But, um, so there's where my issue lies, is it might be that student that has good grades, that plays sports, that's there at every class, that doesn't miss a day. But, you know, it's just one of those things I think we need to do something to crack down because they may not realize it now, but that may save them, three years down the road, from having a true, real problem. So if it's not, if it makes it harder for principals, I'm okay with strengthening the job I need to do as a board member. So from here on out, someone comes, I'm, it's out for me unless there's complete, complete something that will make me change my mind. So with that being said, if, if it's taking away driving privileges, I'm okay with that. If it's a month out of extracurricular, I'm okay with that. Whatever you all feel like you need to do, but I'm going to do my part from here on out at this level to make this in concrete.
Jason, did you discuss with the principals the loss of privileges?
Not to any great extent, no, sir.
Okay. There seems to be an issue here. Is there a resolution that you had, you folks may have had in mind that, that would resolve that problem?
You have one other plan in this list that includes two very specific additional consequences. One is the permission to do urine screens for one year, submit to random drug screenings for one year. And the second is the loss of sports eligibility, which could be converted to extracurricular eligibility for a designated period. You know, I brought your recommendation. If you want to add to it, let's decide what you'd like to add, and we can add to it here in this, in this boardroom. But our idea was, it was a first offense, and you talk about prescription drugs, and you talk, talk about getting kids and parents attention. You know, I think that New River Valley Community Services does a great job with interventions with kids, and you know, even for the kids that we expel, one of the things that we recommend that they have to have before they can come back is they have to go show us that they've been through counseling. And, you know, what this does is takes that counseling component from an expelled situation and puts it in a first offender situation. If you want them to give up driving privileges, just tell us you want them to give up driving privileges, and we'll put it in here. If you want them to, uh, you know, give up extracurricular for three months or six months, we'll put it in here. But we've been talking about this since May, and I've been unable to get a consensus from the board, and I spoke to all seven of you, you know, this time, and I still didn't get a consensus. I got three in one place, two in another place, and two in a totally different place. So I can't bring you a policy because I can't get four votes. So if I can find four points of agreement, we can get you a policy and get it going for second semester because I know that's your long-range goal, is to create an intervention that will make kids and parents think harder about that first offense. And I'm all in favor of that. This was my shot at it. It didn't include some of the punitive things that I hear that the board is interested in. And if you can give me two that four people can live with, I can add them.
Well, let me, I wasn't finished, I'm sorry. Thank you. Secondly, I, I think this is a good program that you have here. I like it especially because it's a collaboration of work of the principals and the administration. And I think it's good. The other part, um, we can always add to this. I think taking something away from it would be very, very difficult. But, but I think as we go down the line here, and again, I'm keeping in mind the fact that we have some new principles in place, and I think things are changing already. I've seen that. I've heard and I've seen, um, changes, for the better. I've never been for continuous punitive actions to kids to the point where they may get defeated completely. And I, I would, I would say that what you've set up here looks fine to me. I don't know if any, any of, any of these other things would, would impact. It seems to me, a student would say, "Well, I got ten days. I can't drive. I can't be in sports. Why bother?" That's what I want to make sure doesn't happen. And I think that the counseling coming into this is a big, big part of this because that involves parents. And I think that's the, the caveat that we have. And if it continues to, if it, if it has the parents involved through the counseling session, which I think it should, then that would be good. And I, I like what you've got.
I, I did like Dreamers' idea of a parent-student meeting with the school administration. Is that what you were recommending as kind of the last, before they come back?
Right.
I think that's very, very helpful myself. I, that could be, I really like that. Thank you.
Oh, I was just going to say that, and one of the things with the time, um, even though with the extracurricular, I'm, I'm kind of with Joe on the, you can't, you can't beat a dead horse either. You gotta, two weeks in a child's eyes is much longer than in ours' eyes, I believe, you know. So a month, to me, is a little bit long. No disrespect, I just, I just think that's a little long because I, I wouldn't, if we did do any kind of, you know, taking away driving privileges or extracurricular, I wouldn't want it to be for more than two weeks, just because that's a, that's a long time in the life of a teenager, so.
Well, certainly while the student is suspended, they won't be involved in those activities.
I'm, I am perfectly okay with starting with what we have, adding maybe the parent-teacher conference before they come back. I am fine with starting with what you guys have.
Can I ask a question about the five and the ten? Is that because block, that would be too much academic time compared to the?
That's exactly right, yes.
I'd like to move that we approve this presentation as a resolution on adding the final step of a parent-student meeting with administration.
I'd like to offer a comment if I could, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. We can still have it on.
Thank you for your time. As Ms. Blackburn said, we've been talking about this since May, and I think we need to get somewhat thinking about our goal. I struggle with making sure that it's punitive in a fact, in, in the manner that we get the message across. And what I see before me here is a good start. I had the same question as Ms. Franklin about the strict behavioral contract. What is that? It, it seems to be a little bit too open-ended for me. And I would hope that not only the student signs it, but the parent signs it as well, and that they recognize that they cannot come back to school until that has been signed. I think that, um, the extenuating circumstances kind of bothers me. Mr. King is coming to the podium, and that's never a good sign.
Groans allowed. Just remember that all of these offenses are mandatory expulsion. So this is a contract that you're saying to the kid and the parent, you may entertain this contract and sign this contract and agree to abide by all of its terms, or take your chances with the board where the recommendation shall be under federal law expulsion. We're willing to consider these extenuating circumstances because it's a first offense. But if you don't abide by these rules, you're gone. That, that's the way I've always understood that these have been administered specifically in districts just north of here.
And that's what the last bullet says. It says, "Failure to complete every piece of this program results in a referral to the school board for possible expulsion."
Right. And, and I believe you probably could go a step further and say, if you don't abide, it doesn't even need to go to the board, except as a perfunctory matter because the board is the only entity that can expel. But if you have failed in these regards, there will be no sort of chance to speak your way out of it because you've already been given a chance by the administration. So when that child and family appears before you, and Jason and the staff say that they have failed to go to drug counseling, they failed to come to school, they're failing their classes, et cetera, I would imagine you won't have much tolerance for that as a board.
Then you're recommending they wouldn't even have to come before us. We could put in here that if they don't do.
Well, as, as a due process matter, I believe you could write a contract that they are essentially signing that and foregoing the opportunity to come before the board. But the reality is, under Virginia law, only the school board can expel. The superintendent doesn't have the authority to do that.
And I would really prefer they come before us.
Well, I think that we're trying to let the administration deal with the first offenders.
Absolutely.
Continuing on with what I was, thank you, Mr. King, I appreciate that. Tightening of the contract, uh, yeah, I, I, I'm of the opinion that it has to have some level of punitive measure to it. And, but I'm flexible in trying to understand whether it's, you know, the parking is not going to apply but to a small population. So that's, the sports will apply, extra, I shouldn't say sports, extracurricular activities will apply to a larger base of, of students. I would like that if they're going to be out five days or they're going to be out ten days, that they're not sitting at. days, that they're not sitting at home playing video games and that they've gotta go do some community service before they come back.
Phoenix. The plan is with these kids that they would all be at Phoenix unless there's some reason for them not to be there. They wouldn't be sitting at home.
They wouldn't be sitting at home.
No. 'Cause we don't want them to get behind academically if we're gonna put them right back in the academic program. That was one of the issues we had with writing the behavior contract. You have to write the behavior contract with an expectation that a child could meet it. So if you write something in there like, "After this, they have to make Cs or better in every subject," you can't write that because a number of the kids that we see have been making straight Fs. So we wrote it, they have to show improvement in their academic performance in the classroom. The, you know, adding the direct parent contact is easy to add to what we have. The NRV program is set up to require that there be two sessions of the counseling that are attended by the parent and the child. But adding that parent piece is very easy. But our plan is not that they would sit at home, but they would go to Phoenix and they would do their work. And if they don't follow the rules at Phoenix, then they haven't completed the program and they're gonna be recommended for expulsion.
We get some kids in here who are on long-term...
Do they have the option not to go to Phoenix if they're being suspended?
No. In this instance, if, as part of this program, they would not have an option unless, for example, we had multiple kids in a similar incident and we chose that they needed to be separated and could work it out, that somebody's doing their work at home. But in general, they would be in the Phoenix program.
You know, you just said, in the strict behavior contract, we wrote in there, the kids, you have to show improvement.
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm missing, what you wrote. I need to see what that means, what that looks like.
Did you bring a copy with you, Jason, by any chance?
I did not. And I got that a little bit late to the superintendent and she and Mr. Shempkins have been making some revisions for me.
Nelson, do you happen to have that with you by any chance? We looked at it early this morning and got moving in several different directions and didn't close the gate at the end of the day. Okay. Okay.
Could we have it for next meeting?
We need...
I guess my other comment is that I think we require this of the students that we expel, that if they wanna come back to school, they have to have drug testing. And I think that's an important component here, that if we are suspending the student for a drug violation, possession, use whatever it may be under the influence, that before they come back into the system, they have to have at least one drug test that proves to administration that they're clean. And that's going to be clean.
They're probably not gonna be able to get a clean urine screen if we got them under the influence.
Well, the other problem is...
In five days or 10 days.
If we demand that, don't we have to pay for that? And we need to be careful in that bailiwick too because...
It goes further than that. Statute says you can only require drug counseling and additional drug testing if the parents agree.
Right.
If you, the way we get around an expulsion is because you're saying expelled is forever, except you have an opportunity to come back and reapply. And so as a condition of reapplying, we're gonna require that you show us a clean drug screen. But for a suspension, you could not do that.
Potentially let them know in the behavioral contract, which I think is where some of us tend to, to say that they would be, they would be in that, that they would be subjected to random drug...
I may have been unartful in what I said. You could put that in the contract because in the contract, the parents and the family is choosing the contract over a hearing in front of you all. And so a condition of that contract could be drug screening. But for practical reasons, Ms. Blackburn may be correct, that some of the remnants of those drugs stay in the system for a longer period of time.
Well, and I have to say, this program, for the student who actually tries and cares and gets wrapped up in something they just don't need to, this is gonna impact, this is gonna make an impact because they're not used to having this there. Now, the student maybe that's used to, you know, clicking along and maybe doesn't mind as much the trouble and things like that, this might not impact. But the way I kinda see that is maybe they're not gonna follow through and that's the student that's gonna come to us anyway. So that's the way I'm perceiving this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So straw poll here real quick, I mean, where are we at?
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, I wasn't finished talking before and I never heard a second.
You asked for a straw poll, I didn't understand the notion to start off with.
Yeah, we needed a motion at the beginning, yeah. I'll move that we...
There's a motion on the floor.
Is there a second?
There was already seconded.
Yes.
Motion on the floor. So are we ready to vote?
I still haven't seen the documentation that I'd like to see and I still believe there needs to be more consequences than the information I haven't seen as far as privileges being taken away. Now, we talk about, oh, this could, you know, turn a child around. Well, let's really make them understand that it's serious and not just, okay, let's make sure you increase your grades. I mean, as Mr. Jones said, extracurricular might not catch all the children, driving most certainly doesn't, but it's a deterrent there.
Any final comments? And since this is policy, I'm gonna ask for roll call on this.
Can we clarify the motion? It was just as this reads with the addition of the parent meeting prior to the student returning.
No, just as this reads.
That wasn't her motion.
No, that wasn't...
It was my motion. I made the motion.
Oh.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's approved the intervention program detailed in the attached chart. For first offense substance abuse incidents where a student is in possession or under the influence of drugs or alcohol, the superintendent recommends that the program be implemented at the school level and that failure to comply with all requirements of the program will result in a student's recommendation for expulsion and hearing with the school board. Authorize the superintendent to bring the required policy change to the board and to communicate the change for implementation from January 7, 2013.
Now clarification, again. You wanted to put an amendment on that motion, but I believe the amendment you were making was already in here because parents and students do meet with the counselors and that's what you wanted.
The difference is it's not spelled out in here.
Well, I'm asking her what she wanted.
And I had understood that it would be with the counseling program. And what we wanna add is that the parent and the student would meet with the school administration person before coming back to the school. That was my amendment. It was basically built on Dreama's idea.
I'll accept that amendment. Is there a second to it? Does it need a second?
Yeah, it does. It needs a second. We have to vote on the amendment.
I'll second.
Okay. So have you got the amendment? Okay.
With the administration of the school.
Okay. Okay, so we, and we had a second on that? Ms. Bond, okay. So we need to vote on the amendment first. I'll ask for roll call on the amendment.
Ms. Alford?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
No.
Motion carried, amendment carried. Now we're back to voting on that first motion that you just read off. I'll now ask you to read it again. This time we'll ask for roll call.
So we're gonna read it. When approved the intervention program detailed in the attached chart and amendment reading section, for first substance abuse incidents where a student is in possession or under the influence of drugs or alcohol, the superintendent recommends that the program be implemented at the school level and that failure to comply with all requirements of the program will result in a student's recommendation for expulsion and hearing with the board. Authorize the superintendent to bring the required policy change again as a amendment to the board and to communicate the change for implementation from January 2, 2013. Ms. Alford?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
No.
Special prayers.
You have a policy.
I'll bring you a policy. Next meeting. Because it does require a policy change and I will bring that.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Thank you, Mr. King. Any final words, Mr. King? Let's see, we're good? Go. Next time.
Our next item is the continuation of the board's capital facilities, long-range planning discussion and actions. As I was thinking about this agenda item, I thought, you know, we have a number of issues to address in the short term and they appear to be intertwined. And it makes the discussions that we're having subject to some confusion. So I thought I'd try to clarify exactly what I see the issues being out there that are overlapping. First of all, we may have budget reduction requirements, which could, for example, lead to things like school closures, changes in grade level patterns. And I'm gonna talk about those more when we do the next budget update on the 16th of October. And this is one thing that's out there that we're talking about. The second thing is the capital maintenance issues. And we've talked a lot about the fact that Montgomery County Public Schools has just $200,000 in its budget to do small capital projects. And at our joint session with the Board of Supervisors, there was a lot of conversation about the need to try to find a better way and a continuous revenue stream for these kinds of projects. And, so now I lost my script. Okay, pardon me while I find it again. 'Cause I don't wanna leave that out. So Brenda, what I did, I emailed it to myself by mistake, so you're gonna have to show me how to get it out of here. 'Cause there are four distinct things and I don't wanna take a chance of missing one of them. There it is, maybe it'll open back up. There it is, I got it. Sorry, okay. So the second one are those capital maintenance issues and we talked a lot about that the other night, especially in relationship to some of the things that need to be done at CHS, regardless of what the long-term solution the board may choose for CHS as. And we talked about the auditorium and we talked about some sidewalk issues and those kinds of things. So that's the second one. And you'll recall that each year we've been putting a million dollars as a line item in our preliminary budget discussions. But as the budget has been shrinking, each year we've come to the point that we had to cut it. So that's the second discussion. The third one is space utilization issues that are scattered throughout the county. We've got some overcrowded schools and we've got some schools with capacity. And balancing available space with needed seats is challenging sometimes because of the geography, but it's really more of a redistricting discussion than it is a long-term capital plan discussion. So tonight, you know, what we really wanna focus on is beginning this serious discussion about the long-term capital needs, which we started with the Board of Supervisors on September 27th and which you all spent quite a bit of time talking about back on September the 10th in your workshop. So regardless of how we end up handling items one, two, and three, you still need to have a long-term plan in which you've identified priorities because regardless of what you do about the short-term budget issue, regardless of what you do about potentially redistricting at some point, and regardless of getting more money for capital maintenance, you still, in five, 10, 15 years, need a comprehensive plan for your facilities that would include major construction projects. So I've asked Walt tonight if he would facilitate that discussion with the board, that's kinda the next step after your workshop from the 10th and after your joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. And we're gonna walk away from here tonight, hopefully having accomplished three things. And I'll let Walt lead us into that discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I thank you for the filming 'cause it puts me on this side. There wasn't enough room to fit us all up there, so I'll be sitting out in the audience on your future meetings. As we move through the... Something moved quick. As we move through this review of the topics that we have, let me see if it's a backspace. Locked up? Yeah. Locking up, locking up. There we go. Thank you. Wrong key. What we start out with, we'll review briefly some of the topics which were discussed at the joint meeting, recap some of our discussion from the September 10th meeting, and then look at some of the possible next steps. The joint, from the joint meeting, it was a very positive meeting with a good discussion. Having attended several of our joint meetings, I think this one was a very, very fruitful meeting and a good exchange on both sides of the board. I think we'll, everybody agreed that the funding will be a challenge for both capital and the operating budget. Some things we'll have to learn to live with. There did appear to be some support for an updated capital plan, understanding what we've accomplished and we did cover some of the things that happened over the last number of years and what's, what we're looking for in the future and that this would be a long-range plan. And a lot of discussion about the need to develop additional detail, even when we got into the discussion about what to do in Christiansburg or Christiansburg High School and even the suggestion about if there was some money available from the capital accounts of the county, an amount less than what it would take to build a new building or recap a building, but if you could do some things to make improvement in the short term while we're waiting for the economic things to improve and the county to get in a position where they could take on more debt or more borrowing or larger sums of money come available, would there be a possibility for that? And that we needed more additional detail for that. Just a quick recap from our September 10th discussion. And I think you'll agree that funding is an issue, but it's really beyond the control of the school board because you do not raise your own money. All your funds come to us appropriated. We'll continue to work through that. If a funding source is identified and we know we have funds, we can generally then work through and plan for the use of that. But the identifying the source of funds is a little more out of the control of the school board. I think there was agreement on a couple of issues as we went through the plan that was approved in 2006, that the Christiansburg area projects were the kinda next greatest need that we had when you looked at the school profile, some of our data based on enrollment, school age, number of mobile units, that we had the issues at the elementary level within the Christiansburg strand and also had the issues with the... We had a lot of discussion about the priorities that were used. We've been using these priorities in the previous CIP plans that have submitted. They have worked well for us. On this criteria, it has been very flexible, has given us general guidance in order to do the CIP planning. We really hadn't seen or discussed what an alternative priority would be other than going through a one, two, three, four, five, but keeping them in a, with a critical and a serious and important, in the early stages, gave us some flexibility. And so from the staff perspective, we would like to continue on with some of these priorities, at least in the initial discussions. It's still open for the board's input or to give us guidance on what you would like to see the priority to be as we go through the future planning. But we would at least like to continue using these priorities unless you have something else you'd like us to look at or develop on this. Are you seeking input at this point from the board on this?
On this, we are hoping that we can walk away this evening with either the board validating that you'd like to continue to use these priorities, or that you would give us some direction about what you would like for the priority definitions to look like. Our conversation has been that this categorizing has worked well, and we're recommending that we continue. But I know as we've gotten input, there's been some discussion about whether it meets all the board's needs or not. So we need to validate if we're going to proceed in that direction.
Board members, comments, questions on the criteria before you?
I'm fine with it.
I am too.
Everybody good? Okay. You've got validation. It's a good starting point.
Yes.
And then when, as we work through it and you put projects on the list, and when funds are identified, and you have maybe a couple of projects that are critical, but there's not enough money to do them all, then we come back in more detail, prioritize among those projects where you want to go. And so it does work very well for us.
Is there a fourth category that has nothing beside it? In other words, I know critical, serious, and important, but I'm trying to recall, is there something in there that needs to be done eventually and doesn't have a bullet beside it?
We wouldn't put it on the list.
Okay.
Yeah. If it's not important with the, you know, very limit you have on money, that's just a lot of work to go through to list everything that really doesn't have a need at this time.
I was going to just raise the question about Rivendell, and I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, maybe later, but...
We have a discussion at the end there. We can probably bring it up there at the end. Looking at immediate issues, and this really affects the planning that we do at the staff, and most of the items on here, I don't have to tell you what's going on, but this is a reminder to the board that the staff right now has a pretty full plate with relocating into Building C, with the two high school projects on tap right now, and those come next spring are really, we'll get into, they're in full spring now, but the planning and the implementation of getting furniture and getting things scheduled and getting all that work done in the timeframe of next summer is going to take a lot of the staff time to do. The other area is, and it's one of timing, we haven't discussed it much, but we have to look at it, is the relocating of Blacksburg Middle School back to their home location. And it's really looking at what the expectation is, what we need to do to the building before they move back in, or do we move them back in as soon as possible and just live with what's there until we can get to it? And that's some of the discussions on the plate. The renovation of Auburn Middle School, that's coming on top of this, because that'll go out for rebid here in November. We've got some meetings here in October to meet with the architects and the engineers, again, to tie down that project. And so there's a lot on plate. And so when we look at capital planning, our kind of next step that we're looking at and focusing would be, we would probably about in February, maybe the second meeting in February, we would bring back to the board then a kind of an update to the long-range capital plan, which goes back and looks at what we had in 2006, some of those projects that are still on there, work with the staff at some of the things that need to be added to that, and then bring you back in February, kind of an updated long-range capital plan to look at. We don't have any money, and there's no proposal to be any big sum of money laid on our plate right now in order to plan that. So we'll continue this long-range capital planning for some other short-term needs we need to do. But in the area of Christiansburg, since I think it was pretty much heavy discussion on the 10th, that we really need to look at the Christiansburg Elementary, Christiansburg High School projects. When we have done this in the past, and those that were here when we did the Auburn planning, you recall the first step we did on that was some feasibility, because when we looked at that project, we weren't sure that there was even enough land space or road space that would even accommodate either a middle school or a high school. And so we did an early feasibility study on that site, and then from that feasibility study, we moved into hiring an architect firm to get into some of the early planning and holding community meetings and deciding what we really needed to do there. So our request would be for the board's support, that we would put together a request looking at some of the capital funds. We still have some balances in some of the bond accounts as we finish those out, and these are potential balances over and beyond what we need for the $124.5 million that we're using now. We had scheduled to use about $10 million left over from the Elliston and the Prices Fork projects to fund that, and that money's there and has already been accounted for in that county's planning for the $124.5 million. But we would be talking in the $100,000 to $200,000 range of working with the county to see if we could not identify some planning money to use to go out and hire the professional experts that we need to come in and assess the elementary schools, the land of the elementary schools, Christiansburg High School, and see what's feasible, what we'd need to look at considering the current codes and some of the planning standards we have, and seeing what could or could not work. And this would be at a kind of a high-level macro, looking at the site and your road net, some of the possibilities, and then even at Christiansburg High School, possibly some of the smaller projects as, you know, what it would potentially cost to do some of the program changes that would be needed within that building. But we need some of the detail and the data in order to, you know, look at even the feasibility of, would we recap the building, or would we, you know, consider building new construction? And so we would like to, you know, start off with some of those feasibility funds in order to get the additional professional help that we need there. And that would be kind of a next step, which would then feed in as you continue to meet and look at the projects, because it would provide you both data for the long-range capital major projects and for maybe some of the short-term interim measures that we would take.
Before you move on...
That's the end.
Well, question on relocation of the school board office to Building C. Can we make it positively clear that we're taking from the Junkin Street building as much furniture as we possibly can over to Building C? Because there's a lot of people out there who are under the impression, excuse me, that we're going to be buying all-new furniture.
We're not buying...
And that's wrong, because it's my understanding that most of the stuff in that building is nailed to the walls, but we're going to take as much as we can. Am I correct?
Yes. We're not buying all-new furniture.
Right.
We're taking the things that have been purchased recently and do meet and support the, kind of the technology support. We have a lot of things in Junkin Street that are, as you said, are installed, older things there and so forth, and we'll be working to have a consistent look. The design of the new building has a lot of open spaces which are designed for workstations, and that was from the original plan of the building. It was planned when the county built it and also for the Building C. We do not have that type of furniture.
The available funds speak volumes. The estimate to refurnish, totally furnish that Building C for the use by the school board offices was in excess of $500,000, and we've been allocated just $250,000 to fill in with the things that we can't take from Junkin Street or from Shawsville Elementary. Our special education folks are, you know, bringing things from there. So just knowing that you only have 50% of the dollars that it was estimated to furnish it should, you know, help dispel that misunderstanding. But clearly, I can tell you, every stick of furniture in my office is going, and anything that's not nailed to the wall and that's reusable in my administrative assistance is going. And the same thing is true, office suite to office suite throughout the school board offices, and we're taking what can be reused.
We've gone through and surveyed every item in the building and pretty much identified the things that need to go and those things that won't work in the building either, they just won't work in the building either size or they just aren't accommodated in the building.
I think you're preaching to the choir. It's the citizens and even the supervisors who need to know this, and I'm hoping that maybe this little discussion will enlighten them.
The other portion of that is we set aside $100,000 for technology. We're becoming concerned that that's even going to be enough money, but we're working through it. It has been put out for bid. The vendor who provides the phone system for the county here did not even bid on it, because he said you can get a better price for the equipment from what the county has. And it's a different system. The county system supports their building here. We need a system that ties together the school board office and your 20 school sites. So it's a different requirement, and so there's a difference in equipment. But we have looked at both, the system that the county here to be able to tap in and expand onto it, and then what the cost would be to put in a new system. It's more, it's less costly to put in a new system. And so we're going through those. We're looking very closely at the money, because it is a very tight budget for that move.
A question from your previous slide about the feasibility study for Christiansburg, the money you're talking about using to do that. Can that money only be used for that kind of thing, the leftover money from those schools?
Yes. We're taught, well, unless it comes from some other capital, if it's money that comes through a bond borrowing, you can only use that on school projects. And most of the language that's put in in your bond documents lists four school projects and multiple school projects. So if we borrowed it for the Eastern Montgomery Elementary and Prices Fork, and we have another, and we have money left over, and we have another school project, then it's just a matter of going through and notifying the bondholders that this project, which is a school project, qualifies for it and will be used for that.
But it could be used for staff, because it is capital money, and it's one-time money also.
What about, like, helping move BMS back or setting up the high schools and things like that?
Remember, I suggested a plan to the board for helping offset some of those expenses when we approved the move to Building C. And I didn't bring it with me, but it included some reserves.
We generally try not to use the bond money for those type of things of relocating the building in a move unless it's, you know, part of a new construction project to relocate. That's where we've used some of the insurance proceeds and other funds, other than bond funds, for those type activities. Did you say you were at the end? Yes. Long-term issues and so forth, we've already discussed that we'll work on updating the capital improvement plan, the discussions about recap versus building new, and then, which will come at a future date, should it happen. And when it does happen, then any proceeds that come from the sale of any of our surplus property, when that sale does happen and you're notified, the board is going to be very actively involved in deciding what the use of those funds would be. And then doing some of the work we do would be, you know, what those potential projects, if there's a potential project that that could go for. But since we do not have any money on the plate at this time, and there's none expected within the real near future, it's not, it's something that will be done during the capital planning.
Couple of things. Based on our discussion at the last meeting and then our discussion with the Board of Supervisors, which if I take a moment, I would like to echo Mr. Shannon's thoughts that I did think, thought that the meeting we had last Thursday was a very positive meeting, probably one of the best joint meetings that I have participated in since I've been on this board. I thought it was very positive. I thought the discussion was very good, open, everyone was listening, and I really do appreciate the Board of Supervisors taking time out of their busy schedules to meet with this, and so I thank them publicly for that. It was a very good meeting. Out of those, and I'm just going to share with you what's on my mind, and that's the fact that if I look at the 2006 list, the one item that sticks out is the Christiansburg Elementary School strand, and then the discussion about Christiansburg High School. Regarding the Christiansburg Elementary School's plan, I'm certainly in support of a feasibility study. Me. I think the key thing, based on my experience on this board, is land. And understanding if we have enough land at the current sites to be able to do what we need to do, or are we going to have to buy land? Because that is going to be the key to a lot of this. Because if the feasibility study comes back and says you're landlocked at these elementary schools, and we then begin to start looking for tracts of land big enough for an elementary school, we all, those of us who've been on the board long enough know how long that takes. So...
Yeah. And that would be the purpose of the feasibility study, looking at your current standards that you have and applying those. There has been some, a little previously, for understand at the elementary sites as to some of the things that could be done there. But it needs to be updated with the current codes and so forth, and look at the feasibility with the elementary, and then also even what the old Christiansburg Middle School site potentially would have.
So, you know, I think that, based on what I'm hearing, it's those two schools that appear to be next on the horizon from a capital standpoint. We all understand that we need to start now at least looking at it and making sure that we, the feasibility studies, and it sounds like we have a funding stream for those feasibility studies. The other thing, and it's not necessarily related to the long-term capital, but, and it may have been in one of the lists you provided at our meeting, the maintenance issues that were discussed at Christiansburg High School, was that on that list that we had at our September meeting?
Yes. Capital, the need for a stream of funding for capital maintenance.
Capital maintenance, but it sounded like there was a number of issues with Christiansburg High School that need to be addressed.
But it needs to be updated with the current codes and so forth, and look at the feasibility with the elementary, and then also even with the old Christiansburg Middle School site potentially would have.
So, you know, I, I think that, based on what I'm hearing, it's those two schools that appear to be next on the horizon from a capital standpoint. We all understand that, we, we need to start now at least looking at it and making sure that we, the feasibility studies, and we, it sounds like we have a funding stream for those feasibility studies. The other thing, and it's not necessarily related to the long-term capital, but, and it may have been in one of the lists you provided at our meeting, the, the maintenance issues that were discussed at Christiansburg High School, was that on that list that we had at our September meeting?
Yes. Capital, the need for a stream of funding for capital maintenance.
Capital maintenance, but it sounded like there was a number of issues with Christiansburg High School that needed to be addressed. Never brought up.
Yes. I've provided you all with a list, couple, a couple of different times of some of the things at Christiansburg High School. It was in a comprehensive list, and then it was also, someone asked me to pull out just what was in there for Christiansburg High School, and it included, you know, of course, the feasibility study would give you some other direction also, but it included some things like the auditorium. We've done the bathroom renovations, but it also has a girls' softball field, if that is indeed a priority for this board. It had...
The lighting and stadium.
The lighting, the whole auditorium.
That was in your capital improvement list that we presented during the budget session, and that would have been back in February, March. That was also the same list we used to work with the board of supervisors when we discussed the 750,000. That list had a lot of the roof projects, but also then had the ADA work that we're doing, compliance work that we're having to do at Christiansburg High, and some of the other projects were, were in that list. So that's, was the current capital ma, improvement list that we had. There would still be some update that could come out of feasibility study when you looked at the building in, in a little more detail, using architect and engineers.
And what I would like to see is, in the 2006 list, we have projects completed and read, is to go ahead and take all the red projects off the list.
That's what we would do.
Get rid of those, and then start looking at what's left on the list. And, you know, we see the Christiansburg, again, Elementary, we've got Harding Avenue on here, there's Christiansburg High School, joint record storage keeping in the government building, there's athletic facilities at the four stadiums, it says that's about some booster stuff. Then you get into building, building repairing alterations of some of the elementary schools. So it's, I think if you take, eliminate the red that's on this list, I believe you're going to come, only have one page, and, which right now, based on what we have money for, that's about all we can put on this one page. But a lot of work has been done, as you indicated, in both of our meetings, when you look at this, and that would, I would like to see administration just remove the red from the list and come back with a updated list, and then we go through that and say, okay, this looks like it's in order. That's me.
Are you finished? Because I wanted to...
Yeah, I'm done.
Yeah, I, I agree. We did do some feasibility study with the Christiansburg Elementary Site at the same time we were planning for the Auburn project. And if my memory serves me, it was that there was enough land there. Now, before we spend a whole lot of money starting all over again, I hope we're going to look at that, especially if the codes haven't changed that much from 2006 to 2012.
Mr. Berenato did pull that study for us to take a look at.
Right. Because I had asked for that, to see what that looked like before.
Was that at the Elementary Site?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I forgot about that.
I want to bring up another concern, and that is Rivendell. And I visited that program when I first got on the board, and have begun hearing a little about it, and I'm a little concerned, maybe we should put that on our list, because as I understand it, there's, at this point, no library, no separate cafeteria or gym, the computer labs, as I understand it, I'm going to go visit. I didn't have time today, but, computer labs and the social studies classroom, I'm a little concerned, because that is a really special program that I was touched deeply by when I visited.
Well, you know, they've gone through three transitions now. You know, they were very well established at Old Christiansburg Middle School, where they had things that a small self-contained program such as a Rivendell probably would not usually have. And then they moved out to Shawsville Elementary School, and they had the whole place, 200 and some student stations, and there were, you know, 30 kids, and so they had everything. And right this minute, they're in the most compressed area that they have had, which is basically the former site of the Wilson House folks. And, you know, long-term, we need to establish where we want to locate Rivendell, and there are options. You know, you're building two new high schools that have quite a bit of capacity in them. You have two middle schools that have about 300 suits capacity in them, and, you know, we're going to develop a reuse plan for old CMS. So yes, I would see Rivendell moving again, but I think it needs to be looked at strategically in the discussions that you do about your facilities.
Well, that's why I want to put it on the table. And I think it's really important, if we're going to have such a program, to, I mean, very honestly, it hadn't been in my mind, and I feel guilty about that, but I do think it should be put in with the grand, moving forward, because they really have very, very little at the site they are.
So I think what I would suggest then is that if administration is going to update the 2006 list and remove the complete items, that we add that one item to that list, and then the board would discuss how it fits in the priority.
And maybe Phoenix too, I don't know.
And if I'm remembering right, it's actually come full circle, because I believe when I started on the board, that's where the program was located to start off.
I don't know for sure, but I think that you may very well be right.
Well, I'm going to go visit. I, I wanted to today when I was at Christiansburg, I didn't get a chance to do it.
Now, what we had planned is that, as you all are talking, to add things that may come up in this conversation, not prioritized already.
Right.
And that also, you know, we're finishing that structural review that's been taking place, and there may be some things that come out of that that would come onto your list. So we would bring you back the things that are unfinished from '06, and new things that may have come up either in this discussion or on your discussion at the tent. And staff would give you a recommended priority, and then allow, you know, board discussion and input to adjust or, you know, change those priorities, or suggest things that we may have not included on the list that you would like to have.
And I haven't heard anything about Phoenix, so I can't really speak to it, but I do want to visit them.
Board members, any other discussion, comments? Okay. Do you feel like that you've got direction this evening from this board?
I do. I needed three things, and I think I have them. I needed you to validate the criteria or suggest alternative. I needed some consensus from the board that we would pursue some feasibility funds for looking at Christiansburg area schools. And third, that staff would bring you back a list in February that would have deleted the completed projects and add things that we might see or that have been discussed as new, and begin that process of establishing a priority for the long term. So yes, I do have.
Okay. And with that, we move to the next agenda item, which is your calendar of activities. And you have that there?
I have no comment other than just to remind the board that tomorrow evening is the open house celebration of Margaret Beek's 50th anniversary, and it is a, it's an open house structure, so it's between 6:00 and 8:00. And there's not a program per se, but lots of different things to see and memorialize the 50 years of Margaret Beek's history available for the board.
This is the shirt of the half-century. Got it.
Unfinished business by school board members? Any unfinished business?
I'm just hoping as we're discussing outsourcing, that we also talk with districts who tried it and have pulled back on it. I'm assuming that's the case. I don't know, was it Redford that tried it, Roanoke, or Roanoke County? I would just like to be sure as we're looking at it, that we check in with school districts that may have tried it and rescinded their decision after trying it.
Okay. Any other items of unfinished business by school board members? Items of new business by school board members? No new items? Next item on the agenda is announcements and information. Anybody have any announcements or information?
I wanted to share, I went today to Blacksburg Middle and High School on this special week of actively caring, caring about each other. What's the program called overall?
Winning Choices.
Winning Choices. And at Blacksburg Middle School, they had the actively caring group that's come into our community, into our schools. It's really awesome, where you pass a wristband on, a green band, to someone, you've seen do something positive for somebody, and thank them for doing something nice. And they had handout for kids to write in their response to the program, and one was really interesting that I saw, said, "Well, I, I was involved with, I signed up for this last year, but I didn't really get involved, but now after today, I'm going to be really involved." And that was really, I loved it. And then Blacksburg High had a wonderful Mr. Gaines speak about caring and what's really important in your life. And he'd been a teacher for many years and a coach for many years, and he ended up having a person at his high school, track, young man, that he had to really, really work with. The guy could not run past four mailboxes, he said. And he starts talking about this man and what the track experience had meant to him, and he became one of the best runners, and he was in the audience, and he had been in the Marines, twice served abroad, was head of a, of a company, and he used the exact things that Mr. Gaines had taught him, as Mr. Gaines moved him into being a really super track star, by using and being conscious of who you are, what you're here for, and using the gifts. It was powerful. I really thank you all for having that program. I hope we continue it. It's really good. It was powerful.
Any announcements or information?
The next item is upcoming school board meetings. Next school board meeting is October the 16th, 2012. We will be looking at the FY13 budget update. It will be a facilities update and a capital projects update. And with that, I seek a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. We're now adjourned.